If you would like to speak on an item, then you will need to raise your hand. Click on the Participants tab that becomes visible when the mouse cursor is at the bottom of the window. Click on the blue Raise Hand button on the bottom of the Participants menu. This should bring the blue raised hand icon to show next to your name in the Participants menu. For those joining on a desktop or laptop computer, there are keyboard shortcuts you can use to raise your hand. Windows Computer, it's Alt plus Y. And on a Mac...
Computer Options. But... On a Mac Computer Options. But...
Is that battery on?
Yeah. Okay.
If you're using an Android or iPhone operating system, then you will need to navigate to the three dots on the bottom right of the Zoom Meeting Room screen. Click on the three dots and then you will be able to raise hand when your item of interest that you would like to speak on is announced by the Planning Commission Chair. Tablets will have a similar screen as the smartphone Zoom app. Once your hand is raised, you will be placed on a list in order of all individuals according to the time hands were raised. Remote users should please wait until your name is called by the chair and you will be unmuted to speak on the current item. You will be required to provide your full name and mailing address for the meeting record. Thank you for your patience. Please wait for the meeting to start momentarily.
Tony, you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, the meeting will start in 30 seconds.
That was a quick 30.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here in the meeting room tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be recorded live and available for viewing by members of the public afterward on the www.minhahacounty.org site. In observance of the CDC guidelines for social distancing, tonight's meeting is taking place simultaneously within the county commission meeting room and virtually within a Zoom meeting room online. In the Zoom meeting room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item and then request the petitioner to come to the podium, make a statement, or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by planning staff in the order the hands were raised and state their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. For those participating remotely, please watch the following instructions on how to raise your hand in the Zoom program. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, before you get to public input, could you please do a roll call vote for attendance solely because we do have some members that are peering via Zoom. So if you could please just do a roll call for attendance purposes. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Here.
Odie?
Here.
Ralston?
Present.
Randall?
Here.
VanderVleet?
Here.
Duffy?
Here. Thank you. We'll go back to public input. Anyone wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand. And if you are attending remotely, you will be on muted to comment. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes. Please note, Commissioners, when you're making motions or a second, please address and tell us who you are, please. Item number one on the agenda is the minutes from the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Is there any comment or changes into the minutes?
This is Randall. I approve the...I move the minutes be approved as written.
This is Barth. Wait a second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 22nd meeting. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
VanderVleet?
Aye.
And Duffy? Aye. Motion's been approved. Move on to the regular meeting information. Items number two and four are conditional use permits. Item number three is an application for a rezoning, and item number five is a recall review of a conditional use permit. Any final action taken on the conditional use permits tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, August 3rd at 5:00 PM. At the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the rezoning will be forwarded to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at or after 9:00 AM, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Next, I will read the description of item number two. If any wishes to comment on item two, now would be your time to raise your hand. Item number two is conditional use permit 20-20 to transfer one building eligibility from tract 1 Miller's Edition Northwest Quarter, Northeast Quarter to tract 4 Miller's Edition Northeast Quarter, Northwest Quarter, all in Section 27 Township 101 North, Range 51 West. Petitioners, Ron and Cheryl Nelson, they're also the property owners. This is located approximately 5.5 miles south of Hartford. Scott?
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. I'll give you a short recap. As you can see on the map, the applicants are requesting to move one building eligibility on the existing lot to the parcel to the west. And this is located south of Hartford, but it's also about one half mile east of the Wall Lake Park. So it's pretty easy to figure out, put that in, help situate that in your mind. This would normally be on the consent calendar. There were no issues. There are no CAFOs in the area. It doesn't increase the building density in that area. So staff is recommending approval with one condition that it...maybe there's no condition. Let me look here. Yes, there's one condition that a right-to-farm notice be placed on the property before any residence is constructed. So right now, there's...it's vacant land. I can show you the pictures of it. It's...so this is the existing house, and if...this is to the west and shows you the existing parcel. This is looking back towards Wall Lake. This is looking towards the east, and that's basically the parcel. I'm glad to answer any questions, but we're recommending approval. And the applicants are here. If you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Scott? Will the petitioners please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Ron Nelson. My address is 46351 266th Street, and my wife Cheryl. And all we're basically doing is putting it back to what it was originally surveyed to be.
Okay. Any questions for him?
Yeah, Ron got one. Why was it moved originally, anyway?
Well, we had an old farmhouse there, and my son went through divorce, so we fixed it up so he could live there with the kids for a while. And now we basically don't have a need for it, so...and that's all we're doing.
Any further questions for them? Thank you. Are there any other patrons here to speak to this item? Okay, Commissioners?
Jeff Barth. Jeff Barth has his hand raised.
Jeff?
Yes, make sure they use the microphone. It was pretty hard to hear that.
Any other questions for them? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Doug Odey will second that motion.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve conditional use permit 20-20. Any further questions? Okay, another roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Morehauser?
Aye.
Odie?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
VanderVleet?
Aye.
And Duffy? Aye. Conditional use permit 20-20 has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three is a rezoning 20-03 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District on the property legally described as tract 2A, Waltz Tracks, Northwest Quarter, Northwest Quarter, Section 27 Township 103 North, Range 49 West. Petitioners, Ransom LLC. Property owner is Bruce Valen. This is located approximately four miles south of Baltic. David?
David Heinold, County Planning Department. Rezoning 20-03 is to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the subject property from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. This property does have a single-family dwelling on it. The properties to the north and east are zoned commercial. The Planning Commission and the County Commission just both recently rezoned the property to the south to commercial over the past few months. The petitioner plans to further expand business operations from the existing shop onto the subject property and land to the south. The Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan encourages both commercial and industrial land uses to occur at existing rural service areas where state and county highways intersect. The proposed rezoning to commercial fits with the purpose of the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan to develop a countywide land use pattern that ensures compatibility and functional relationships among jurisdictions and related land use activity. The proposed zoning change aligns with the goals and policies of Envision 2035 Comprehensive So staff finds that the proposed rezoning for the A1 Agriculture...from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District is appropriate transition. Given the existing land uses in the immediate vicinity, staff recommends approval of rezoning 20-03. And I can go through some of the pictures if you want, but they're same as last month. The map does show the location of the property. As you can see, there's several commercial properties in Raven Industries, most notably is in the area. Answer any questions?
Any questions for David?
Madam Chair, I just got one question for David. The single-family dwelling on there, is that currently being lived in?
I don't recall at the moment. I don't believe so. But the petitioner can clarify if...
Okay.
Thanks, David. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Todd Ibis, 1600 West Wicklow in Sioux Falls.
Okay, Madam Chair.
And Doug, I can answer your question.
Okay, please.
So the occupants moved out about two weeks ago.
Okay.
And so they...I believe they went to Salem or something like that.
Okay. Now, is there any...what's the plan for that family dwelling?
The plan...we're trying to resell it, pick it up and move it to another gentleman.
Okay.
And there was...well, the lot to the south, that's the same...
Same way.
Same thing there, so...
Okay. So looking down the road, when that house is moved, you obviously...do you own that property right now?
Yeah, yeah, Bruce.
Okay, so the building eligibility...the single-family will fall off then, or...
They'll both be removed, and we will be looking to put commercial structures.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Is there any other one, either proponent or opponents here to speak about this item?
No hands are raised in the Zoom meeting room.
Okay, Commissioners?
Ryan VanderVleet?
I'm here.
Make a motion to approve item three on the rezoning.
Mike Ralston will second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve the rezoning of 20-03. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehauser?
Aye.
Doug Odey?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan VanderVleet?
Aye.
And Bonnie Duffy? Aye. Been approved. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit 20-19 to allow gravel extraction on the property legally described as a northeast quarter, Section 24, 102 North, Range 51 West. Petitioner is Zacharias Construction. Owner is Roger Person. This is located approximately two miles east of Hartford. Kevin?
Kevin Lookman, County Planning Department. This item is a gravel extraction site. The map is shown here to...of the area where the gravel is proposed to be extracted from with a couple of driveways leading to the north and to the south. The primary driveway being to the south. Since staff has sent letters out, we have not received any concern regarding this item, and it likely would have been placed on the consent agenda with the conditions added. For a location, I'll just note that it is a couple miles to the east of Hartford, kind of along the Skunk Creek Valley. If you look on this map, you'll see a couple of other holes from previous gravel quarries. There's a kind of a lake to the northwest there and one to the south. The petitioner has noted that there has been no water found where they're planning to mine at this location, so there will not be a pond at this location. It'll just be a kind of a depression in the ground. And with that being noted, staff is recommending approval for the item with 18 conditions. And I'm here for any questions.
I got one. Is there a setback for the Skunk Creek done or not? That they need to be or not? I can't remember.
No.
There isn't? Okay.
Any other questions for Kevin? Is the petitioner here?
Hello?
Oh, hang on a minute. Becky's got a question, I guess. Go ahead.
I just noticed that there was a letter in the letter from the...from the petitioner that the property...and maybe they can address this when they come forward, that the property owner will be the one returning it to the original condition. And usually we ask for the bond from the petitioner, but I think...I don't recall in the past that we've had a statement that the owner is going to be the one returning it to the original condition. So I don't know if somebody wants to speak to that or if that will become clear as the petitioner discusses this.
All right. I might have the petitioner answer that, but it's staff's understanding that it's the petitioner's responsibility to reclaim the quarry, and the landowner will then, after it's reclaimed, plant a crop on it in the future is the plan. But I'll let the petitioner take that question.
Any other questions for Kevin? Will the petitioner come forward, state your name and address, sir?
I'm sorry, can I go ask a question?
David, someone have their hand raised?
Somebody is trying to speak, but no hands are raised.
Okay.
I'm Jeff Zacharias.
I don't know how to raise a hand on here with just a voice.
David, is she on?
Nope. No hands are raised, but they're trying to speak on the item, so we may want to come back to them.
Ma'am, either whoever it is is talking, can you just wait a couple minutes? We do have the petitioner here, and then you can ask your questions.
Sure.
I'm Jeff Zacharias with Zacharias Construction, 25854 Skunk Creek Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. In regards to the reclamation, typically a bond is posted with the D E N R, and we are responsible for reclaiming the land. So if it's stated as such, that's a misprint or something like that. We'll be taking care of that.
Are there any further questions for him? Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you could hear me. I was just wondering, it's very hard to understand a lot of this, and I'm trying to understand what route those trucks are going to take. This is Wanda Jandle. We live at 25961 465th Avenue, and I'm concerned about the trucks running up and down the road out front here because of several soft spots that the cars really dig up. If there's any trucks on those roads, it's really going to make that road hard to travel.
I'm not familiar with that road, but the primary hall road will be straight south out of the property on 461 to Highway 38, and from there...
466.
466, yes.
Ma'am, could you hear that?
Yeah, sort of. It's really a lot of noise in the background when whoever that is is talking. It sounds like they're just going to be on 466th Avenue, and they're not going to be taking any of the other roads.
That's correct. With the exception of if the load...these are stipulations of township, and I talked about, if the load is to be delivered within two miles of the exit of the pit, then, you know, we're allowed to turn left or right or go north.
Can I ask you a question? On 466th Avenue, is there just one residence that you would be coming up to there down the corner there? Is that right?
The Moline Properties are probably the ones that you're looking at at the...
It's in the Low White Square?
Yep.
Okay. Is that a resident?
Yeah, those are the only ones.
Okay.
Any further questions for the petitioner?
One other...one other one, Jeff. Like, how many years do you project that you will be in this pit?
It's, you know, all driven by the economy and the market, the size of the jobs. You know, I can tell you that there's probably 600,000 ton of gravel back there, and we're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of 60,000 ton a year potential. So, I mean, somewhere around 10 to 12 years is, you know, kind of what we're projecting.
Okay, thanks.
Bonnie, can I ask?
Go ahead, Adam.
Are you going to use it for yourselves, or are you going to...
We are not for sale to the public type deal. Our trucks only are maybe some trucks if we need help hiring, but we will not be selling to just anybody.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions for the petitioner? David, do you see any hands raised out there?
I lost my connection for a second there. I gotta log back in.
Go ahead, Adam. You have another question?
Yeah, just another question. Were you going to put dust control down then, on the days you use it or not? Or did you talk to the township about it, I guess?
Yeah, I talked to them, and I think that, you know, what we're looking at is that magnesium chloride water along that McMillan area there, you know, as needed, I guess, or whatever. And then my agreement with them is also to maintain the road. If I need to blade it or add some gravel, then that's going to be up to me to, you know, keep it in as-is condition.
Okay.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
David, was there anybody out there that had their hand raised?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised in the Zoom meeting room.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
In our conditional use permit, are we setting a number of years that they get to operate or is it open?
Condition number 15.
He said condition number 15. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Okay, Commissioners?
This is Randall. I move approval of conditional use permit number 20-19 with the staff recommendations as noted.
Hold second. Jeff Barth here.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve conditional use permit 20-19 with all the conditions. with all the conditions that are noted by the, by the staff. Roll call vote.
Any, any discussion on the motion?
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan, Ryan VanderVleet?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Conditional use permit twenty dash nineteen has been approved. Thank you. Scott, is there anybody else in that room, Becky? Okay. Okay, we have item number five, recall conditional use permit sixteen dash eight five to allow truck and trailer storage and repair on the property legally described as lot two, block one, Green Valley Edition, northeast corridor, section twelve, township one oh two north, range fifty west. Petitioner is Steve Schreiner. This is located approximately two miles north of Sioux Falls. David?
Good evening, Planning Commission, David Heinold, County Planning Department. This item number five is a recall conditional use permit sixteen dash eighty-five. The, this property is located at four seven one seven four Haley Street. It's actually, as you can see, it's outlined in red. It's in the middle of all that's developed now, all of those lots, and I'm just going to go through a few pictures that I have. The property owner had reached out to me about two weeks ago after receiving the, one of two notices for the recall of the conditional use permit. So just to give you a little bit of background of what's going on, he reached out to me via email about inquiring about a quote from a contractor to do the project, and I think there's a contractor like in the T, like Lincoln County area, that does a lot of work. That's kind of behind, but he, he noted that the contractor had been out to the site to give him an estimate of the proposed driveway from the building. As you can see, this is the site plan that was submitted as part of the original conditional use permit, which just shows, basically just shows the one single driveway, but as you, as I proceed forward, there's some of the photos that I've taken. The, the building that's there now, or the, the repair, and there's, the garages to the left are more of like a rental for other businesses, but those have never been open. So the ones to the right of that, kind of that jut out in the middle of the building, middle front, are the truck and trailer area where the property owner maintains that business. And that's where you saw the, the driveway that was supposed to be hard-surfaced on that site plan. I have reached out to the, the property owner, Steve Schreiner, about the, what the requirements are for the zoning ordinance and, and paving that from Haley Street, which is a hard-surfaced road. And basically, I reiterated what the site plan had mentioned. He's got to maintain some kind of fifteen-foot separation with some kind of green space. But if he's going to have that full length, then he's going to have to hard-surface all of it up to the garages because all of the other properties along that cul-de-sac have done the same thing, and that's the, what the requirements say is to pave up to the garage doors. With that being said, just a few more photos that I noted. The last time I was out there, which would have been July fifteenth, I did see a for-sale sign for Mark Luke Companies, and I did look on the website, and the property is listed on the website and in, and in person there, as you see in the image. And I believe that's, this is just that picture, okay. So with that being said, staff finds that the property owners had appropriate notice for the Minnayak County Planning Department to resolve the conditional use permit violation. The property owner, Steve Schreiner, has mentioned to me that within the next two weeks, he expects the contractor to be out there to hard-surface the driveway. Staff suggest, or recommends that conditional use permit sixteen dash eighty-five decision on that be deferred until August twenty-fourth, Planning Commission meeting. With that, I, I would strongly recommend setting some kind of deadline of August thirteenth for the petitioner to complete the required hard-surfacing of all the driving areas adjacent to the public right-of-way. So that gives staff some time to get the, the notices out and everything, as well as getting the packets of information to you. Certainly, they could hard-surface it up until August twenty-third, but we want them to come into compliance, so the earlier the better that he can get out there and do it. I think it's best for everyone. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I just want, Dave, how far on that picture there, how far does he need to pave? Does he need to go all the way back where that pickup is in the back there, or is it just up to the front of that building?
All the way up to the building. I think there is a, like a concrete pad.
The paved back there, or not?
There's no pavement in the back.
Okay.
I think there's a little bit of concrete, like, I think, apron around the building, or, I don't know if that's the right word, but.
But it's just up to that front of the building, that's why you need, okay. It's hard to tell on that picture. It does kind of look like, it does kind of look like pavement there, but it's hard to tell. That's, I was just kind of wondering. That one I could tell it's gravel, but I just didn't know on the, on that side of the building how far it went to.
Yeah. Is that your question?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I guess one more thing I would add on top of Commissioner Morehouser's question. There is like a storage area to the, located to the north of the building, which would be behind it. And there are trucks back there, trucks and trailers. I think that's it.
I have a question, David. You've kind of repeatedly been trying to work with the petitioner from what I, from the information I received. Are we hopefully, hoping that he's going to comply with, or follow through now with this, or are you, don't know?
Well, I, I'm hoping that there's compliance by August thirteenth of what he said to me. The contractor gave him an estimate, which I told him to provide me something in writing, and all he provided me was basically a text message from the contractor. And I think I provided that in the packets.
Yeah, you did, I just. And he's not here tonight anyway, the petitioner?
I don't believe so. You can call for the petitioner.
Okay, any other questions for David?
Madam Chair, this is Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I noticed that there's some penalty for past due taxes. Are the taxes up to date now?
Last time, I, I haven't checked recently, but within like the last week, the taxes have not been paid on the property, and that's like six thousand some dollars, or, no, like ten thousand, I think, six thousand.
Any further questions for David? Anyone else care to speak to this item? David, there's nobody on Zoom for this, is there?
No hands are raised in the Zoom meeting room.
So really, all we need is just a motion for a deferral. Is that correct? Okay, commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'm Jeff here. I'll make a motion to defer. That said, I, if they come back, I want to know that those taxes are paid and this has been paved. I'll make the motion to defer, if you could, if you can.
Do I have a second?
Chair, Doug Odie, I will second that.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to defer the recall of the conditional use permit sixteen dash eight five. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan VanderVleet?
Aye.
Bonnie Duffy, aye. Item number five has been deferred until August twenty-fourth. Okay, we'll move on to old business.
Uh, one item of old business is the second reading of the plan development for Cedar Ridge Plan Development, which is about a mile north of Renner. The county commission overturned the planning commission's decision to recommend denial, and they approved the plan development. Well, if you remember, you had a, there was a recommendation on a larger building, which you recommended approval for larger accessory structures. The county commission also agreed with that. They overturned your decision on the adding the six lots, and they approved the plant, the developer's request to add an additional six lots to bring that up to twenty-two lots in total. So, that was at last Tuesday's meeting.
I'd just like to make a comment of that. I did attend that meeting. I did not agree with the commission's approval of that. I think we set a new precedent by approving those. I understood from the discussion, maybe this should have been put together at the beginning, and then this wouldn't have come later, and now this could probably cause some problems down the line with any other plan development we may have. But that's my own personal opinion. Okay, um, there was another item of old business. Doug, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, um, this goes back several years. The Houston Speedway property, that was a conditional use permit, and to me, I feel that should have came in front of us, rather than skipping us and just going straight to the county commissioners. I really became aware of this when they're having a race already, is it this Saturday or Sunday, whatever it is. I just felt that we're here to do our job, so why weren't we involved in this process? I'm sure, I was all for it, I'm sure we would have passed it, but it's just that they're kind of setting the precedence when they're gonna, if they can override us and go right to the county commissioners on some, some big item like this Houston Speedway project that, that has been sitting vacant for two years.
Okay.
Jeff, do you have anything to say on that, being your county commissioner?
Uh, not really. It's obviously an item of.
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh, there, there, just for a point of clarification, Commissioner Odie, they never had a grant, they never had a conditional use permit for the racetrack. It's always been grandfathered in, and I will provide you with the letter that we sent to, in, in regard to the Speedway, to the attorneys representing the Speedway, and it's dated from two thousand eighteen. I can provide it, I can email it to the commissioners that weren't here at the meeting, but this was a, a letter that was prepared, it indicates that they are a legal non-conforming use, and that that use can continue. So, if you recall, we have had, we have taken action at the Speedway before. We've approved a variance to rebuild the grandstands. That was like, I think, five or six years ago, and that was a variance for them to rebuild the grandstands in the, basically the, the identical same location. They needed a setback from the, from the state highway, and we granted that variance. And then there, and subsequently, or prior to that, there was a conditional use permit for some off-premise signage, some billboards that go around the interior of the track, and that was also approved by the planning commission. But, excuse me, but there has not been a conditional use permit for the operation of the racetrack as a racetrack. Now, I, I have been working with the current property owners, and they've expressed interest in bringing that into compliance, so that might be something that you will be seeing. I, I don't have a specific timeline on when the new applicants or when the new owners are considering applying. I can just tell you that we have had some discussions, I have had some discussions with them, that they are considering obtaining the conditional use permit. So it may come before you soon.
Okay.
And can I answer any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any new business, Scott? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ryan VanderVleet, motion to adjourn.
Doug Odie will second that.
Roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan VanderVleet?
Aye.
And Bonnie Duffy. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.